Onto item five, Health Department Performance and Management Review. From Adam London.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to address it. Summary with some of our measurements from the past year. Briefly, I'm going to go over our alignment with the priorities of the board, some of our key performance metrics, some of our important budget issues and accomplishments, collaborations, and then a quick look ahead. As you know, this board has six priority areas. What you have in this slide is the five of those priorities on the left, and on the right you have our 12 strategic objective areas. These are the 12 essential services of local public health, and they align quite nicely with the board's priorities, and especially in the areas of a safe community and a high quality of life. The mission statement for the Health Department is to serve, protect, and promote a healthy community for all. The Health Department, as you probably know, is the second largest department in the county, and I think we have the second smallest mission statement, which I'm proud of because I think it very succinctly says what we do, and I expect all of our staff to memorize this mission statement, and especially to know the first and last words, which are the most important words, and sum it up very nicely, "Serve All." That's really what we're about at the Health Department. There are four major service areas at the Health Department. I'm going to briefly talk about each of those and show you one metric for each of those service areas. The first is Administration, where the goal is to advance the mission statement by providing overall leadership for the department. That includes our senior executive leadership, our IT, finance, communications, quality improvement, and epidemiology, which is where this measurement comes from, which is to complete 95 percent of communicable disease reports within 30 days of notice. So we receive disease reports from doctors' offices, hospitals, and from citizens. We begin the investigation on them right away. Within 30 days of our, we have to have a full report complete for all of them. Now, this is an area where we have struggled lately to meet the objective for a couple of reasons. First of all, as you see in the table at the bottom, the numbers on the left, out of parentheses, are the percentage that we're completing within 30 days. Within the parentheses, you are seeing the total number of reports that we received over the year. The number of disease reports, illness reports that we're receiving has gone up quite a bit over the course of the past couple of years. That's actually a good thing. It's not indicative that there's more disease in the community, but actually it's because we've made our reporting system easier for providers and citizens to work with. We need to get a little bit better at closing reports out, and in many cases, it's because we're struggling to get people to return phone calls, and so these reports kind of sit in a pile. We need to get into a better habit of just closing them out once we have fully investigated. The second division is our Clinical Services Division, which advances the mission statement by providing public health services in the clinical setting. This includes immunizations, our WIC program, our Personal Health Services program. The image you're looking at is one of our supervisors, April Height, on 8 West, talking about HIV testing. Still a very important public health issue. Every year, we test several hundred people for HIV, and we find a few that are HIV-positive. Over the years, we've identified about 500 people in Kent County that are HIV-positive. We know there are probably several times more than that that don't know their status, so knowing your HIV status is, of course, very important. The measure that I have for this program area is our teenage vaccination rate. We do a very good job in Kent County with vaccinating our young children, and our adult population is also very well vaccinated. We actually are in the top tier of Michigan counties for vaccination rates for our youngest and our older populations. We struggle with teenagers. So this is an area that we've focused on over the past few years, doing a better job working with the schools and working in the places where teenagers frequent to get our messaging to them. And as you see, our percentage and our total number of teenagers who now have fully vaccinated has gone up quite a bit over the past couple of years. It's actually time for us now to bump our goal up from 75 percent to 85 percent, and I'd like eventually to get to 90 percent or greater. Our Community Wellness Division provides public health services throughout the community and in the community. Here you have an image from our Hearing Vision Program. Every year, we screen 90,000 Kent County children for hearing vision, and we find about 10 percent of those children have a sight or a hearing deficit that is referred on to a care provider and to their family, of course. This makes a huge difference in the life outcomes, the academic outcomes, for these The measure that I profiled for Community Wellness is within our Refugee Resalvement Program. Our goal is to have 100 percent of those refugees have received a health screening within the first 60 days of their arrival here in the U.S. We have, we're doing a much better job over between 2014 and 2015, where we went from 80 percent to 98 percent. You may remember, I brought to this board during that time period, a proposal bringing some staff into that program, which was approved, and that's why we moved from 80 percent to 98 percent of those people getting their screenings on time. Since then, we've fallen back down to 90 percent, and that's because we had a 50 percent increase in the number of refugees that we received here in Kent County last year. I expect, because of a different political environment, that we'll probably see fewer refugees in the coming year. Finally, Environmental Health is our fourth division, and probably our most diverse division in terms of the services that it provides. Everything from food safety to drinking water, waste art management, campgrounds, pools, radon, our public health laboratory, animal control, and the animal shelter are all part of environmental health. The image that you're looking at is one of our interns working in the laboratory sorting mosquitoes. Every year, we trap hundreds of thousands of mosquitoes here in Kent County, and we sort them by species, and then we test them for West Nile virus so that we can communicate important messages in a timely way to the public. Through this species sorting, we can also look for the species that spread the Zika virus. Now, we know that, or at least we think we know, that those mosquitoes do not live this far north. They only live about as far north as the Ohio River Valley. However, change happens, and so this program is one of our sentinel programs that we can look for those mosquitoes here locally. The metric in this program is having 100 percent of our well-inseptic evaluations completed within 30 days. That includes the inspection, the water sampling, all of the after-reporting. Generally, we get this done much quicker than 30 days. We have seen this increase from 85 percent in 2014 to 91 percent in 2015 to 93 percent last year, despite the fact that the actual demand for this service has gone up pretty dramatically over the course of the past couple of years, from 255 evaluations to 356. Again, you may remember, we actually revised our fee schedule a couple of years ago to bring four new staff members into this program, and because of that, we've been able to do a much better job meeting this increased demand, which is one of, a number of indicators of an improving local economy, is this demand for evaluations, which usually accompany the sale of a loan. Some budget issues that we're keeping an eye on. The proposed federal budget has some pretty significant cuts to some agencies that we work very closely with. While I can't say exactly how much that's going to affect us, I can say that those federal agencies push dollars to the states, which then push dollars to the local communities to deliver service. They also are a huge support for us when we have strange and unusual things happen here at the local level. It's an advantage for us to be able to call our colleagues at the CDC or the EPA in order to get support from them. The Public Health and Prevention Fund is part of the Affordable Care Act. That fund provides resources for Zika surveillance, for vaccinations, for laboratory services at the local level. Again, it's difficult to say, you know, the future of the Affordable Care Act, as we all know, is kind of up in the air. If that were to go away, it would remove some programs like this, which push dollars into the local communities. The failure of the state of Michigan to meet their obligation to share the cost of their mandated essential local public health services programs. We have eight programs the state requires us to do, and they're supposed to split that cost with us. Right now, they're at about 40, 42 percent of their, of their, of those program costs, which is about $400,000, which as a result, this community through fees and general fund has to make up the difference. And then the growing demand for food safety services. Again, another positive indicator of a local economy, we are seeing an increase in the number of plans that we receive for new restaurants. So we're seeing an increase there. However, that means that we have increased demand on our limited food safety team, which right now is staffed at about a 2,009 level during the recession. We see many more licenses, many more establishments now. We pride ourselves on keeping our fees really low in that program. However, the downside of that means that when demand increases, it doesn't generate enough new revenue to pay for new physicians to ride the service, so that's something that we're keeping our eye on. All right, some things to celebrate. Huge reduction in infant mortality over the course of about the last 12 years. In 2003, this community looked at our overall infant mortality, and it was 8.5. That means for every 1,000 children born in Kent County, 8.5 of them did not survive to see their first birth date. That was one of the highest rates in the state at that time. Since then, this county, along with lots of partners in the community, have focused a lot of resources on improving the environment here for new babies. We've invested in strong beginnings, in safe sleep initiatives, in car safety initiatives, in home health nursing, in health education programs, again, to make this a safer environment for our newborns. Also at that time, we saw a huge disparity between the infant mortality for black babies and white babies. At that time, it was 19.4 was the rate for black children in Kent County, and 6.5 for white babies here in Kent County. Since that time, as you can see, we've made a pretty significant improvement across the board. We're now, for the first time ever, our black infant mortality rate is 9.9. We're below 10 for the first time ever in black infant mortality. The overall rate here in Kent County is now at 5.4, so we've made some pretty significant improvements. In case you're wondering how many children that means, there are about 136 children living in Kent County now that probably would not have been if we had stated 8.5, the 8.5 that we were at in 2003. Food safety improvements. In 2013, we decided to recognize those establishments that do a really good job providing food safety. We decided to create some positive reinforcement for them by creating a set of very high standards of performance. Now, in 2013, we didn't tell them that we were going to celebrate them. We just looked at our numbers of the past year, and there were 16 percent of our establishments that didn't really, that met this high standard. And so we gave them certificates, did press conference, press release, all of these things, put them on the county website to create some profile for them, and what happened was really pretty powerful. Other establishments saw this, and it created some encouragement for them to also be included on the website and to get a certificate. Since then, we have seen this increase, where now we have about a third of our establishments meeting these high standards, which are above and beyond what the food law requires. I sometimes say that working at the Health Department is a little bit like being on the X-Files. Sometimes the strange situations that we see and kind of the monsters, microscopic monsters that we see in the community are pretty interesting. Three of those situations we had last year, mumps, we had a couple of small outbreaks of mumps at Helbin and Cornersville. Now, those schools were great partners in helping us to isolate those who were sick, to vaccinate all of their contacts, and to quarantine people as necessary. As a result, those very small outbreaks of two and three and four people did not turn into larger community outbreaks. Cytosclerosis is a illness that affects birds. We had a pet store that had some birds infected with cytosis. That disease can spread to humans and become a pneumonia-like, a very serious pneumonia-like illness in humans. We worked with that pet shop to isolate their birds and to put some control measures in place to keep their staff and their clients safe, and there were no subsequent cases of cytosis in the community. The one you probably did hear about last year was crypto with Rockford's football team. Pretty unique outbreak, which we traced back to a mud fight that they had during camping, a team-building camping trip in August of last year. What you didn't hear, because it didn't happen, was that crypto never spread into the community. Crypto is very contagious, and it's very dangerous, especially for elderly and for immunocompromised people. Because of the great work that Rockford School did and the parents did in partnership with us, we were able to keep this pretty large outbreak within the football team, within the football team, and not see it spill over into the community, so we're very proud of that. The image that you're looking at here is actually the Cryptosporidium parasites, the protozoa, that causes infections, which, again, can be quite dangerous. Some partnerships that were pretty neat during the course of the past year. You probably, hopefully, saw these commercials on television. If you went to a Griffins game, you might have seen our ad on the boards. Take the Shot, our campaign for advocacy to increase our influenza vaccination rate. Great partnership with the Griffins. They were a huge partner, along with local TV stations who need content like this for PSA time, and they all did a tremendous job of really pushing that commercial. Partnerships with local events. The Festival of the Arts is probably the best example, where there are 35 to 40 food vendors during Festival of the Arts, and they serve tens of thousands of meals during that weekend. It is a very opportune time for foodborne outbreaks to happen, but they haven't, partly because they do a great job of partnering with us from the very beginning of their planning every year. We actually have a Health Department employee who is embedded in their planning committee. This is his picture on the left, Randy Hill. And we work with them from the very beginning, and we actually set up a mock concession stand at the Health Department, bring those volunteers in, and they can work through the questions about how are we going to hand wash, how are we going to wash dishes, how are we going to manage our waste, our food temperatures, all of the important risk factors for preventing foodborne illness. My community dental centers continues to be a very important partner for us. Last year, they saw about 5,600 unique patients at the South Clinic location, and they, as you know, provide Medicaid service. They also have a sliding scale for those who are not eligible for Medicaid. Last year, they contributed about $54,000 worth of charitable care in support of that sliding fee scale that they had. And you know they're coming to Cedar Springs this summer, which we're very, very excited about. Quick look ahead. The lead task force under Commissioner Breeby's leadership continues to do its work. Right now, we have about 6 percent of our children here in Kent County that have elevated blood lead levels. That's not good. However, lead is actually a huge public health victory. While we have 6 percent now, 30 years ago, we had almost 50 percent of children here in Kent County and nationally that had elevated levels of lead. So overall, we're doing much better, but there is still work to be done there. Our opioid task force, in partnership with the Red Project and other local organizations, is really trying to get a handle on this opioid crisis that we see across the country. While there's still lots of work to be done, we are seeing some improvement. In 2015, we had 87 people here in Kent County die from opioid overdose. Last year, we saw that number fall by 25 people. We also saw admissions to hospitals increase last year, which is a good sign. People are surviving to be admitted into the hospital instead of to the morgue. And then we're working on our Community Health Needs Assessment. Every three years, we work in tandem with the local hospitals to do a full assessment, a participative citizen-involved assessment of what health issues are important to our community, so then we can build a community strategic plan around addressing those issues. You'll be hearing a lot more about that here in the near future, and whatever you can do to really push those surveys into the community would be very much appreciated. All right, finally, thank you, and a bit of homework for you. For those of you who are on social media, particularly Facebook, please like and share our Facebook page. That's important to us because it helps us to speak directly to the community and to push our messages, sometimes our urgent messages, directly to our citizens, instead of having to go through the media as an intermediary.
All right. Do we have any questions for Adam today? Commissioner Vonn?
Yes, Adam, how often would any given restaurant expect an inspection, and how deep do you go with all the fast foods and the gas stations with the hot dog that's been on rotisserie for a couple of days?
Yeah, so we inspect all of our regular establishments twice a year.
Twice a year, okay.
Yeah, unless they have some recurring or critical issues, in which case we follow up accordingly until they get them solved. The gas stations, we actually don't inspect. Those are part of the Michigan Department of Agriculture's responsibility. They inspect the gas stations along with the grocery stores. Their inspection frequency is supposed to be similar to ours.
And just a follow-up question as far as high school football stadiums and so forth, which I brought to your attention last year. What about those? Do you ever make a spot check of those?
We do. There's a couple of different license arrangements that they can go by. They can either do a temporary event, in which case we will be there, and that allows them to operate for 14 consecutive days. Otherwise, they can do a seasonal license, where that allows them to operate for about six months, which is where most of the football stands now go to. And the menus, as many of you who have been to a Friday night game know, the menu has expanded pretty dramatically over the past few years, where it used to be hot dogs and chips, where now we're seeing chili and barbecue and some pretty expansive menus. We're there one time for the licensing, and then we do follow-ups accordingly. We try to get there more than once, obviously, because things change over the course of the season.
Okay, thank you very much. Good job.
Commissioner Breeby?
Thank you, Commissioner Vonn. I just wanted to commend you and your staff, you know, the department, on the communication. I feel like that's just been really amazing over the last couple of years, even through social media and using our local media as a resource. I think you guys have really stepped up the game in informing the public of, you know, local outbreaks, and also with the promoting of immunizations, using our local hockey team. I thought that was a great opportunity that you guys took advantage of. I just have a couple of questions. One of the things was, where do we rank, you know, nationally with our immunizations for children, and are we, you know, top tier nationally? And also, on page three of your report today, it reads, "More than 1,000 of the 15-minute sessions were scheduled and completed." I'm curious if you have any idea how many parents changed their mind after meeting about those vaccination meetings?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the kind comment. Nationally, Michigan, I believe, is 47th in overall vaccination rates. Not good. Here in Kent County, we are one of the higher-performing counties in the state. We're in the top tier across all categories, but there's still, obviously, lots of work to do. With the waiver counsellings that we provide every year, I think that there, we found is there's two groups, really, that haven't vaccinated, their children that come to us. There is the group that have not done that because it wasn't convenient to get their children to the doctor's office and Health Department, and so with that group, which is a smaller percentage of that overall 1,000 every year, they just get their children vaccinated. So we have seen some real benefit there. For those who are philosophically opposed to vaccination, very, very, very few have changed any minds. However, we realize that within the 15 minutes that we have to meet with them, we're not going to change hearts and minds in that period of time, and so we have instructed our staff to write information, do not argue with them. We're not going to change hearts and minds by arguing with people, so we write the information. Hopefully, they reflect on that in the future and maybe have a change of heart and mind later on, but we provide the information, and then we provide the waiver if that's what they want.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one more question, too. A different topic. I wanted to ask about the availability of the well-inseptic electronic records. I know there was one point where the department was working on making those a little bit more accessible. How is that project going?
It's slogging along. We're actually doing some testing of it this week in the field. What Commissioner Breeby is referring to is a process where we are evolving from having paper forms and documents, where we're creating paper permits and reports in environment health work, to having a system where it's all on an electronic software program, that we can work remotely, we can create permits and reports in the field. We can also allow people to access their own property's information more readily, and so we're getting there.
Great.
Any other Commissioner questions for Adam? Commissioner Vonn?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to commend you, your department, and the county as a whole, dealing with the infant mortality rate reduction. Back in the early 2000s, when Commissioner Vonn and I were here, we did a committee task force in regards to the infant mortality rate specifically in the black community, and we came up with a prevention initiative through Wayman, Brett, and Darryl's support as well, and I don't know if all the commissioners realize how much money we spend on that, but the results are phenomenal. Obviously, they speak for themselves. Back then, we were looking at almost a 20 percent mortality rate, infant mortality rate in the black community, and now it's down to 9.4. That just didn't happen by chance. We have been dealing with that and spending money on that, and I would like to commend you and Wayman and Darryl and everybody, all of us, for realizing there was a problem there and potentially spending money every year in our budget to address that, so thank you.
Well, thank you. You're absolutely right, and it has been a community effort. In fact, I'd do a disservice by even listing any programs because there has been a tremendous number of organizations focused on this problem. And right now, again, there are about three busloads full of kids that are with us because of those investments, so it's been a good result so far. More work to do, though.
Correct. Thank you.
Commissioner Stan?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Adam. As caught that you have said is one of your objectives, the screening on refugees, I guess I was thinking that before refugees are resettled, they already go through a medical screening? Is this a supplemental screening or?
Yeah, they do go through screening in the State Department facilities that they are in before they arrive here in the United States. However, once they get here, again, it is part of the program that they receive a health screening here stateside, and also that they are placed into a primary care provider's office, and that's part of what our, really, the main part of our work now, is to make sure that they're aligned with a physician's office so that they have a care provider for their family, and someone who has competency in whatever language and culture that they came from.
Do we have access to the screening that the State Department does? Is that transferred over to us or available to us to review, or is it a protected health record?
That's a good question. I can find out more about that for you. We do have, you know, some information on them, but whether or not we have access to a full medical record, I don't think so. I think we have access to what's provided to us in MICR and in the immunization databases that we have, but I could follow up on that for you.
Okay. Would you, it seems like that would be helpful for us in making those kinds of recommendations once they get here.
Any other questions? I have a couple. You mentioned the aid programs and the state mandates, and then they only cover about 40 percent of the cost. Are those programs that we could eliminate or we want to eliminate because they advocate to eliminate because they're not paying us, or is it something that we just, they're so important that we would just pick up the tab?
Yeah.
Something we should add to our legislative priorities?
Perhaps. They are a true mandate that's required of counties to provide, and I think... And I think these programs are not programs that we would want to cut if we had the choice. These are programs such as epidemiology, our disease surveillance, our food safety program, our drinking water program, and others. They're, they're pretty significant public health programs.
Okay. Second question I had regarding the opioid abuse. In, in, in all of your, you know, digging into this issue and looking at it, are you finding it's primarily over prescription, doctor shopping? Were you able to kind of pinpoint the larger cause?
Yeah.
I know that the legislature's got a, a package of bills that was just introduced last week to try to tackle this. A lot of it has to do with limiting prescriptions, but I do know that some people need those prescriptions. I'm just kind of wondering what your findings were.
So far, we're finding that it's a little of all of the above. We're finding that the demographic profile of this outbreak is different than what we see with other substance use issues. We know that there is a, a system that physicians should be using to, to track. We have maps. They should be using to enter those prescriptions, so that people can't doctor shop.
Yep.
However, right now, it's not required that physicians use that system. So, that's one area of policy that is being discussed.
Okay. And I just wanted to compliment you. Every time you come up, I'm just more and more impressed. So, you guys do an awesome job. Thank you for your great presentation today.
Thank you. And it's, it's a truly a team effort. We have a tremendous team at the health department that is very proud to serve this community. Thank you.
Glad you're there. Thank you. All right, to item six, any commissioner miscellaneous today? Really? None? All right, let's move to your turn.
Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for twenty-six years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are nineteen-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong, solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind-the-scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community, and vice versa. We couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator controller, and over sixteen-hundred employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.